All right, it's nine o'clock and we will open our meeting for our regular business meeting and we will start with a prayer with Ms. Wright.
This is a familiar prayer, but I just thought it just covers so much and it's in a different wording, so it's good. Our beloved Father dwelling in heavenly realms, may the glory of your name be the center in which our lives turn. Manifest your kingdom realm and cause your every purpose to be fulfilled on earth, just as it is in heaven. We acknowledge you as our provider for all that we need each day. Forgive us the wrongs that we have done as we ourselves release forgiveness to those who have wronged us. Rescue us every time we face tribulation and set us free from evil, for you are the King who rules and the power and the glory forever. And Lord, we just say that we're grateful that you are a good God and we invite your presence here today. We pray for peace, we pray for love, we pray for just hearts of unity here and just clarity and good communication and, Lord, we love you and we love this place that we live in. We're just grateful and thank you for the Northern Lights last night. We bless you in Jesus' name.
Amen.
All right, let's lead with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the most I can do on the next item is say we have some standing rules. I will entertain a motion to adopt the order of the agenda as amended.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any comment from the members of the public? Hearing none, any discussion from the board? Roll call vote. Yes.
Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion on consent agenda.
Based on the information before me, before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second it.
All right, any comment from the public on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I understood the minutes.
So on consent agenda, we want to remember to come to the microphone.
I'm not sure if I understood the minutes from last week correctly, but was there a motion to return to standing procedure, standing orders that did not pass or did it pass?
What their motion was is to remove standing rules from the agenda and it did not receive a second, so the motion itself died. So that's what the minutes reflect.
Okay, thank you.
Right, any other questions on the consent agenda? Doug Patterson. And remember, state your name too, sir.
Doug Patterson for the record. So I am asking if you can tell us what the EMS fees are that are being paid for of the over 5K.
The EMS, the big cost on there is at 3,843 for their privacy, so there was the windows where their sleeping quarters are, you can see through during the sun and so that wasn't reasonable to have their sleeping quarters that way, so we are tinting it for EMS. So that was their spend of 3,843 on their budget.
Thank you.
It was, the light hits it just right for display.
Thank you.
And so the other items that were large, I said we might be able to do calendars, but they declined and wanted ten, so. Sheriff, 21,260 for winter tires and then new inland power, new service at Old Town Range was $250. And then there were two confidential items, 12,000 for 11 and then one for 72,974.
All right, seeing no more public comment, any discussion by the board?
None.
All right, roll call vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, up next is Clerk Rosedale.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning, everybody. Before you, I have fiscal year '24 demands. Before I get going here, so what we have is we have bills still coming in for last fiscal year, those are the '24 demands and in addition to that, then we have ongoing '25 bills, but I'm first starting off with the '24. We can collect and pay those until the first week in November. So the first one I'm doing is the fiscal year '24 demand batch '27 totaling 112,568.09 for your approval.
All right, any comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve payment of FY '24 demands and batch number '27 totaling 112,568.
Is there a second?
Nine cents.
Nine cents.
There you go.
I'll second that.
Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Good thing we brought you with us.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Next I have the EMS batch number '27 for the fiscal year '24 totaling 9,902.43 for your approval.
Doug, you don't have a question? I saw it and it went away.
Yeah, I'm waiting for the one after this, thanks.
Okay, no worries. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the payment of the FY '24 EMS demands in batch number '27 totaling
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion from the board? Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, for Doug.
Over explain because you know Doug has some questions on that.
For Doug, fiscal year '25, so this is claims batch number one, this is the first batch in this new fiscal year and that one's totaling 81,566.74 for approval. It's the first one and the, normally it's much larger than that if that's what you're wondering about, Dan, Doug, but don't worry, it'll get going.
All right.
It'll get there.
Doug Patterson.
Doug Patterson for the record, yes, thank you, Mike, that indeed was a question that did seem a little light.
Very.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve payment of FY '25 claims in batch number one totaling 81,566.74.
I'll second that.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, roll call vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And finally, on the claims, I have batch one for EMS totaling 207,059 for your approval and that also will get larger in the future.
Did you say 207,000?
207 dollars.
I was gonna say.
Sorry, 207.59.
Doug's hand didn't go up, which was odd because he said 207. All right, any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the payment of the FY '25 EMS claims in batch number one totaling 207.59.
Second that.
Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, roll call vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioners. Finally, I have a resolution for you. This is the coroner in building the new building, he had a part of his final project in that building was doing an autopsy sink. He was going to have it paid out of our building fund, but he actually has enough money in his budget and he wanted to pay it out of his own budget. So this is a resolution carrying the money forward, any project in process can be carried forward to the next fiscal year per statute and he's asking to carry that forward. That total amount is 26,950, so he's carrying it from fiscal year '24 into fiscal '25 when the expense actually has to get paid.
And I see coroner is online. Beers, did you want to add anything to the resolution?
No, thank you.
All right, any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I motion to approve resolution 24-76 authorizing the clerk to open the budget and schedule revenue by increasing the coroner's FY 2025 budget line item 00106-8310 autopsies inquest from 59,400 to 86,350 and decreasing the justice fund FY 2016 budget line item 34-07-807-0000 capital construction from 500,000 to zero and increasing the general fund FY 2017 budget line item 01-18-807-0000 capital construction from zero to 877,000 and decreasing the general fund FY
Or the wrong one, I believe.
County clerk?
Yeah, so.
Carry over fund for the coroner?
Yeah, it's 86,000. We're going from 59,000 to 86,000.
Yeah, and this is.
I was hearing hundreds of thousands, sorry.
What's the other half of this?
I think you might be reading Jason Thompson's one.
No, what it looks like is they added this.
I have no idea what they did. This is the one that I submitted.
Yeah, okay, so let me stop at the 86,000.
Can I read the recommended and you can like?
I will step down and read your motion because we have a clerk here. The top part of the memo.
It seems like it's awfully long.
I was gonna say, we're changing money quickly here.
Yeah.
So I will step down from the chair and say, based on the information before us, I motion to approve resolution 2476 authorizing the clerk to open the budget and schedule revenue by increasing the coroner's FY 2025 budget line item 00106-8310 autopsy inquest by 26,950 from 59,400 to 86,350 and decrease the coroner's FY 2024 budget line item 00106-8310 autopsies inquest from 59,400 to 32,450.
Perfect, thank you.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
My only question is to give this back to Elisa to review what you gave us to sign because the bottom part is not right and it looks like we're looking at potentially something else on the same memo. I think there's someone else's on the bottom. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Bob, you're about to get marble floors, chandeliers and all that kind of stuff.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and rail and some hooks for when you're not using it, then we can hang our deer elk in there.
All right, next item is with Assessor Inglehart.
Good cooler.
Morning Commissioners, Dennis Inglehart, Bonner County Assessor. This is an agreement request for enterprise management. Bonner County Assessor's office is requesting approval to enter into a two-year lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for eight 2025 Chevrolet Trailblazers, which includes normal non-wear, excuse me, which includes non-normal wear maintenance at the rate of 64,794.24 per year and that the assessor be directed to docket sign said agreement with supporting documents.
Can I ask you, so when this came up during budget time, I asked about the current vehicles that you have, are you going to be listing those for sale to help offset? Did you guys put that up?
They can be listed for sale, I have no objection to that and I'll work with Bob to get those listed.
Okay, did you work with risk on insurance for what that looks like for the county?
We didn't look at those specific vehicles.
Should be addable if we're taking off vehicles, of course, a newer vehicle has higher value, but we can do that pretty easily, just take off, we do that all the time, take off old vehicles replaced with newer, of course, it's based on rate of value, so it should look a little bit, but.
So this was something we addressed in yesterday's department head meeting of things like this that should go through risks so that we have all of the information before we do something? And then also, if we're going to pull the current vehicles that we have off, when does that happen and what's that exchange?
That would happen after we receive these vehicles, which will probably be sometime in March because they have to be built yet.
They have to be built?
Well, that's what I'm told.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move that the county approve this two-year lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for eight 2025 Chevrolet Trailblazers for the Bonner County Assessor's Office at the annual payment of 64,794.24 and that the Assessor, Inglehart, be directed to docket sign said agreement with supporting documents.
There's a motion, is there a second?
There is a second.
All right, discussion by the board?
So one of the things that I thought we were wanting was that we have the package all completed, which would include a review of risk and insurance as it relates to new things that come into our system. I understand that this would take some time to actually get on our rolls, but that's a missing element of this review. And then I did have, when we're talking about non-normal wear maintenance, I thought that that was part, that that's not how it was worded when you presented it during the budget, that it was going to include maintenance.
It does include, when they're talking about non-normal wear, they're talking about tires. If we have to replace the tires, but if something happens to the drivetrain or something like that is covered, electronics, it's covered. Most lease agreements don't cover tires.
Okay.
Or oil changes, yeah.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on it?
I think it's a heck of a deal for eight. That averages out pretty darn reasonable. You buy two new ones, you've spent more than that. So the lease is a much better deal.
This was something that was, went through budget already, kind of, so. We'll entertain a motion or a roll call vote? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll have Matt in for Jason.
Matt Mulder, staff engineer for the Road and Bridge Department, for the record. Road and Bridge is seeking to carry forward fiscal year 2024 funds into fiscal year 2025 in order to pay for our road centerline striping project. We awarded this project in fiscal year 2024 and the contractor is nearly complete with all of that work, but has not finished yet and has not invoiced us yet, so we need to carry these funds forward in order to be able to pay it in 2025. The amount of this contract is 134,623.06 and that is split between two different fund items, 48,000 and change from our striping budget and 86,000 and change from our 032 Turnbull funds account, so. We are requesting those amounts carried forward into 2025.
All right, any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
All right, I move to approve resolution 24-77 authorizing the clerk to open the Road and Bridge FY 2025 budget and carry forward fiscal 2024 funds totaling 134,623.06 to the Bonner County Road and Bridge B budget as detailed in the resolution.
I'll second that.
This went to the auditors, right?
I believe so. Jason spearheaded all of this before he took off for hunting.
It's got bills, I assume, it probably went to the auditors.
I think that's right, guys. I think I recall Jason, his practice is always to send every resolution that he wants to bring before you guys to the auditing department and me before it gets to you, so.
No worries, thank you, I'll check the box on ours, all right.
You went a little too fast asking for public comment.
Did you have a public comment?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
Kev Moore, for the record, Bonner County resident. So you brought up Turnbull again, so can you remind us whatever, how that works with Road and Bridge? How much yearly does the Turnbull offer the county?
Sure, so this was set up by Jed Turnbull, when he died, he had been given a job by the county Road and Bridge Department during hard times earlier in his life and so he cared very much for the Road and Bridge Department and wanted to give something back. So he set up a trust fund with some, over a million dollars in it for the benefit of Road and Bridge and we can take a portion of the growth every year that comes out of that and it's set up to be a perpetual fund that will never run out. So it varies by year depending on how the markets do. We're usually seeing in the neighborhood of 120,000 to 150,000 dollars every year that comes out of that to the Road and Bridge Department, which as long as the markets are doing good, it should continue doing that in perpetuity and, you know, when markets go down, it may, we may not get anything in particular years in the future.
So then yearly, maybe the interest on the million, whatever it was initially, is a couple hundred thousand dollars or?
Correct, yeah, we're not taking all of the growth every year, only a portion of it, so it should continue to get bigger going forward.
So, yeah, as we steadily try to facilitate the needs of the citizenry on Road and Bridge and culverts and things like that, there is monies that are out there, whatever, let alone whether you pull some grant money, Altech or any of these people, there's actually some Turnbull money that's there available too.
Okay. All right, there was a first and a second and the board already discussed.
I'd like to discuss something.
Yeah.
So your numbers were 48,331.41 coming from your fiscal budget 2025 and you're adding the 86,291, is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
And that's supposed to total 134,623.06?
It does not.
He has written 87,291.65. I didn't see where, you said 86.
Yeah.
It's written as 87,291.65.
I see a couple of different numbers on Jason's memo here, so apologies, I didn't write this, I didn't double check any of the numbers, but.
The number that I come up with by totaling those two does not match what our motion should be, that's my question.
You said 86, but are you talking about this number?
This number here and this number here is what he read, pulling up, and that should total this.
So I wonder.
Yeah, one says 87, the other says 86.
So which is the number that you're using? Because your 87 is, I think, maybe.
You're on the spot.
You're on the 86.
Running my calculator here.
Do you see the top numbers?
Yeah, I see how they are different, so.
So I make sure we're voting on the correct thing.
So I think the lesser 86 is probably correct, as I recall, the contract was for 134,000, not 135,000.
The 86 is correct.
I would have to go down and look at all the contracts on the computer and see, but that's my recollection.
So if that's the case, do we want to change the total on our motion?
Well, the motion is what.
But he's saying that the motion is correct, that the verbiage of, at the top is what has the error.
Right, and the resolution on the next page also has 134,000, so I think the 134,000 is correct, not 135, so.
Right.
I think that 87 in the opening paragraph is the title.
It's a thousand dollars in one friend's.
Everyone, I don't bear money. I don't even care.
Except we totaled the 48,000 and 86,000, it still doesn't, we're less than a dollar off, but it's not correct.
So what we can do is we can hold off on the vote and you go down and confirm the total, since it's still agendized, and then when you come back up, then we can say, make sure that it's confirmed.
Okay, I can do that.
Is that all right with you guys?
Yep.
All right, so we'll set it aside.
Correct is always good.
We'll talk slow.
Okay. So we'll pause Road and Bridge and go to human resources.
Alicia Clark, HR for the record. The first item I have is the plan documents for the medical HSA and medical 1500 plan. Bonner County HR office is seeking approval and signature for the Pacific Source Plan documents. The addendum was added, it's been approved by legal.
The addendum mentioned at the last meeting for?
Correct.
Okay.
So any comments from the public on this one? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I make a motion to approve. Based on the information before us, I make a motion to approve the renewal of the Pacific Source Plan documents for the HSA and 1500 medical plans.
Second that.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board?
None.
My only one is on this bill doesn't have a signature on it. So did Bill review it with the addendum?
Yes, Asia. Actually, that addendum is something that I drafted. So that's, it's the fact that it's included on there is by my design. And just by way of background for the board, that addendum is the result of some obligations that the state legislature has put on us when we renew contracts now. And they involve some things relating to boycotting Israel, ownership by China, and some other language about public funding for abortion. And so those are things that the state legislature has said we need to include in future contracts. And so it's just a struggle when we're dealing with renewals and vendors who probably haven't been required to do that before, especially larger companies that probably don't allow their lower level sales rep type people to sign what essentially is a counter offer or a contract. By example, the agreement that you guys just approved for the enterprise lease vehicles took a lot of work because the enterprise folks didn't have authority to sign that stuff, and they had to send it back to their legal department in Milwaukee or wherever it is. So just letting you know that that's going to be a continuing issue on what would otherwise be really routine contract renewals.
So on these ones, I don't see, I didn't see it as because it was attached because it didn't say yours. So can it on your future ones have it say Bill Wilson so that we know that he's reviewed it?
Yes, I did clarify with the office staff, but I will make sure it's added.
Yeah, that typically, if we have an email chain that includes the office staff there, then typically they'll just stamp my name on it. As long as they have an email from me saying it's approved, I don't physically sign those. I, that's why I have stamps over there. So maybe that's something we can just clear up.
Yep. It's, I, on this, it came forward where we didn't have it done the last week. So I want to make sure it has your stamp on it so that it shows we, it went through you.
Yep. Hundred percent.
Next item.
Okay, so the next item is our third party.
Wait, stop, stop. We did a motion and a second, but we didn't vote. I asked a question. Sorry. Roll call vote? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the second one I have is the third party administrative service agreement, amendment number one. So HR is seeking approval and signature for the Pacific Source Third Party Administrative Services Agreement. This also needed to include the addendum from Bill. They did add it, and he has approved it.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve commencing with approval of updating compensation policy. Is that the one you're on?
Renewal. She's on the renewal one.
I just did the last one.
He did. Well, there you go. Getting ahead of myself. That's the one you did.
It's Fred Arndt's phone. That's the one I just read.
That one you just did.
So the next one's buried in the same paperwork.
It's TPA Service Agreement Amendment One.
Change up midstream. Geez, Louise. Watch you guys all the time. Edit for me.
Yeah, I had to find it.
Good luck, and I found it. Mr. Chair of Warman, based on the information before us, I make a motion to approve the renewal documents for Pacific Source TPA Amendment Number One for 10, 2024.
A motion. Any discussion from the board? Roll call vote? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The last one I have is HR is requesting approval to update the compensation policy. For those of you that don't know, we went from a pay band structure to a grade and step. So the first one would be 600, just updating the language from pay band to grade and step. The 600.5.5 is hiring. The updates are to reflect hiring up to midpoint based on experience for the 10, 12, and 15 steps we now have that was sent out to EMS, the sheriff's office, and EMS sheriff's office and Justice Services to review. 600.5.5, pay upon promotion, change of verbiage to say though a promotion may or may not include an increase in pay, having considered the above factors, it is recommended that the employee be moved into the appropriate grade and step nearest their current wage without a decrease in pay. After new grade and step placement, any additional increase may not exceed one step. Salary offered must be aligned within the great, within the range of the position. And then 600.5.9 is chief deputy pay, updating the verbiage to say the pay differential only applies to the employee during the chief deputy assignment, which occurs in the absence of the elected official in the amount of 400 per pay period. 600.6, job descriptions and job evaluation. We added one, if the employee receives a warning notice or a process improvement plan anytime during the current budget year, the employee will be ineligible for a potential annual step increase. 600.2.12, interim pay. We're updating the verbiage to say the interim pay typically results in positions assuming additional responsibility outside their current duties or as a temporary reassignment, such as an interim role. The interim pay will be $400 stipend per pay period while conducting additional duties.
So I have some questions on the changes here. And so I'll start with the first one on number three, the idea of promotion. Sometimes you can have actually a change of job function that's not a higher step, but maybe a lateral or even a step down. Are you defining promotion in a way that, because my, because not all changes in jobs are promotions. And so is there a distinguishing language within the policy that does that?
Well, this one is just, I mean, this one does indicate it may or may not. I think each situation is different. You have the lateral moves, and you have people who are moving into a higher grade or role.
My problem here is that nearest your current wage in one position cannot be where that wage would be in a different position. And so your policy is just saying someone maintains their same rate of pay even when they move, when sometimes you're actually taking a decision to have less responsibilities, but the policy implies that they would receive the same rate of pay that they're currently are, which is focusing more on years of service than the position that is underneath. So sometimes people will hit a ceiling that says, I have reached the top of my grade in my position. I either have to do more to get a different position that will pay more, or I've hit the ceiling. This language sounds like it doesn't matter what you do within the industry, we're going to continue your rate of pay regardless of your moves, which I have a question on.
Well, currently right now, just to clarify, I did some research. I talked to Cooney County. Their policy says five to 15%. Our current policy says that, but with us going to a grade and step structure, we need to forget about the percentage increase because that throws everything out of whack because it's not percentage. It's going to be step and grade. Doesn't necessarily mean anybody moving into a job will get a promotion, and that's why I have that in there, that it may or may not include as the caveat, because every scenario, like I said, is different. I did also run this by Ameriband when we still had them available, and she said that it was reasonable to go that route.
But the language says that they would be moved to their nearest current wage. That's my question. My other one is when you go down to your number five, if you receive a warning notice or process improvement plan at any time that they're not eligible for an annual step increase, was there input from Ameriband on doing that to an employee? Because some people can have an error, and they correct their error. It can be something as you didn't do something technically right, but then we would impact their rate. And I would, I welcome people to give comments on this of does someone get penalized? Because that penalty impacts them significantly to say I gave you a warning versus, that one I have a question on whether that's a reasonable thing to do to impact somebody's rate of pay for receiving a warning or a process improvement, because process improvement can negatively, this language, in my opinion, can negatively impact management going through saying, because we're always supposed to be giving people, these are areas that you can improve on. This is something that you can grow with. And so that I have a question on. I also have a question on interim pay. When we have people leaving the organization and we're looking for someone, there's a proclivity in this building to say, if I have to take on some additional duties in an interim, that I'm entitled to an additional amount of money until that position is filled. That's not something that I've seen in public sector at that rate. And so I'm kind of wanting the discussion. I don't know the right or wrong on it, but I have a discussion on those aspects of it, because we often in job description see a 10% other, and sometimes that is covering until filled. It's one thing if we're talking, this position has been open for months and months and months, and it's causing a problem. But simply being open for, we're not advertising it, but we're paying it and using the argument of since we're not paying that FTE right now, we can afford to pay someone a little bit more when it's just that we're looking for another person. So.
To answer your question on number five, the only reason that that on the warning notice was added is throughout the budget meetings, the board showed interest in the fact that if somebody was on any kind of performance, they didn't technically want to reward bad behavior, so to speak. I'm not opposed to removing that. It is up to the discretion of the board on that one.
For me on that one, it's not bad behavior that you're rewarding. What you're doing is you're, when I brought forward, we're not doing performance evaluations. There are people in this organization that have not had performance evaluations in decades. And so we have to be able to transition to recognizing that management needs to manage the human capital that they have. But if I'm looking at a job performance and I say, you can improve on your documentation, and this is what I'd like to see progressing, you end up with not getting very good evaluations. If that language can be interpreted as negative, that would impact somebody's rate of pay. So that's my question on that, and I'll wait until the, if another board member has a comment on, on either of those things. But I have a concern on that, because I want, I want, it should be that management feels comfortable to evaluate and that an evaluation isn't negative, but a constant process of improvement. And I think that might, to me, it sounds prohibitive of that. So, but you did answer all of my questions. So I, does the board have any questions for, or before I open it for public comment?
Not this time. I just ran through the numbers real quick, and that $400 per pay period, someone stepped in, deputy officer, that's a $5 an hour bonus raise, however you want to look at it. The other person, I'm assuming, is not getting paid while that person is stepping in. I guess there would be different scenarios, huh, different situations?
So it's ultimately when like an elected official is gone for any time throughout a pay period, they delegate the authority to their chief deputy, so that is a higher level of responsibility. Nothing has changed. The amount has always been 400. So in that regard, it was just updating.
Okay.
I think you were commenting, the elected official still receives their rate of pay while the county pays out that. Is that what you were asking her?
In a roundabout way, yes. So they're on vacation or something.
But, or they're away from their office. And so there are some times when the treasurer or the assessor, I think that's where it happens most in the county, where they have their chief officer, but essentially the county is paying an additional $800 a month for the chief deputy to be activated, if you will.
And historically, just so you know, when the elected was gone or somebody was assigned to chief deputy, it was baked into their base salary. So we separated that out because if somebody new was appointed, how do you know what amount to take away from that individual, if any? So that's why we took, we did the separation so that we could identify what the amount was.
Okay.
The other one is just in, in general, a staff member, like right now, you'll see there's a assistant not in the commissioner's office. The last, the number six is saying someone is entitled to $400 per pay period until that position is filled.
Well, that's a different duck because you got three commissioners, and so two of them, you still have the board. So you don't, yeah.
No, the number six on her change is for interim is what she's arguing for.
Yeah, that wouldn't apply to commissioners.
I think I can speak loudly now. So the reason that's.
Can I, can I ask not only because people complained about not being able to hear? And so, well, except we're going to use yours, because I haven't opened it for public comment yet, as you're giving input as the auditor on this issue.
With the chief deputies, statute requires all of the duties, except, all the, all the electeds except for commissioners have chief deputies. That's so in our absence, statutorily, the show can go on, right? So if there's a problem, we're absent. Clarissa's at her bowling league or whatever she normally does. The treasurer's office can continue to operate.
That's what she does.
That's right. That's what she does. So that's what that is. We have to have chief deputies. It's not even an option. So that when we're gone, calls to the degree we can make them ourselves as elected officials, our chief deputies have that same authority. So they are fully empowered. It's a, it's a sobering, serious thing so that when we're gone, the county does not suffer. That's all I want to say about that.
All right. So any more questions for Alicia?
No, I'd make a motion to amend.
But, oh, can I, can we do public comment before you motion?
Okay.
All right. Any public comment on this?
Kev Moore for the, excuse me, Kev Moore for the record, Bonner County resident, happened to be on the corner of Highway 95 in Blacktail with Coca-Cola coming through.
So we're going to be supposed, so I want.
And so I'm bringing this up because we're using the word compensation and verbiage and policy. And so I might be one category ahead here because Mr. Attorney, or county attorney is here, whatever. So maybe this is, comes up next, whatever. But talking about compensation and verbiage and policy, it's like, are we going to talk, are we going to talk about severance as per what happened here about the $72,000?
Okay, so I'm going to stop here. Everybody likes being able to give a comment on items that are on the agenda. And we also want to keep the flow of business moving forward. And so I know you haven't been here for a couple, but I do keep giving a comment on the status of that particular question. But when you're coming up, when we're on an agenda item, if we stick to that agenda item, it moves us forward and keeps us focused on where we need to be. Because I don't want to move towards saying, well, we can't have the opportunity to talk if we're going to change the subject when we get to this item. So the current thing that we're talking about right now is 600 compensation policy, which we have gone through. So I'm offering the public comment on this topic alone. If you have a question on something else, that goes into public comment, but I want to stay on track on this topic.
Good morning. Jennifer Kramer, Bonner County resident, for the record. Thanks again for doing comments on the agenda items. My question, well, a couple of questions. I guess, I don't know if, if these increases are merit based or cost of living based, but if someone, my experience, process improvement plans are not done, there's, and I, it sounded like a warning and a process improvement plan were being treated the same, which I don't think I agree with. Having managed people before, you can give them a warning that, hey, you know, we need to do this differently, or you need to improve here. And, and those are just a supervisor's responsibility. They owe it to their people to guide them along the way. A process improvement plan usually comes into play when they're consistently failing and, and performing below expectation. And so then you do a PIP, and I don't think those should be rewarded at the end of the day with an increase in compensation.
And sometimes that form is where someone is actually placed on a probation with a process improvement plan. And maybe there should be some distinguishing language between, between the two.
Right, right. And then your comment that people haven't had performance reviews in decades is a little bit disconcerting. I know that might be a different topic, but I would like you guys to address that. So.
Public comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose.
Dan Rose, for the record, two comments. The first one was related to movement of personnel.
The first one was related to movement of personnel laterally downward and what have you. Would that mean that if someone's reached their top step and they can't go any further, they want to take semi-retirement, move down to a lower, how do we say, responsibility job, but still maintain the income that they were making at that higher point? And secondly, to Kevin Moore's comment, 600.1 is the bonus language of the compensation policy. And this agenda says compensation policy 600. So, that would include 600.1 all the way through 600.14, whatever that end is. So, I don't believe that Kevin Moore is too far off target.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Jacob L. Planning, Director. So, this hasn't been circulated to the department heads for any kind of review or input. So, that's the first comment. I think there's a lot of changes here that I think department heads should have had an opportunity to review before it gets adopted by the board. So, in a 10-minute review, I noticed a handful of some inconsistencies or some other improvements that could be made to this policy. If you like, I can go over some of those now, or I more or less just respectfully request at least a workshop with the department heads. This could have been brought up yesterday during our department head meeting, before it was brought to the board today, so.
Thank you.
And I agree with your points on the, I've had a number of employees beyond either an improvement plan or just verbal warnings, or even written warnings, that have turned out and changed their course. But I think the way this is written, it's going to discourage department heads from giving any kind of formal reprimand towards employees that would have changed their behavior, because it's going to essentially.
Hamstring.
Bar them from giving, yeah, hamstring them from getting kind of, any kind of compensation increase. So, I think that might have just a negative effect overall, and we're going to end up retaining people we probably shouldn't, or not processing some kind of improvement. So, additionally, seven, or 605.7 at the very end, it still says, all future merit pay eligibility is effective with the date of the new position. But I think we're getting rid of merit-based increases, we're going to step in grade, so at the very minimum, we need to change that line. And this is the question that brought up when this was, when the merit, or sorry, when the step grade position, or a policy was first implemented, which is, when is the step and grade, like, promotions happening? So, when is everyone moving from one step to the next? I think in that meeting over the summer, the response from the HR department was that every October is when everyone's step increases happen. So, that still conflicts with how the policy is written here. So, if that's the case, great. If it's not, then we just need to figure out what we're going to do.
May I comment on that? Thank you. I'm going to wait on that, because I did public comment.
Sorry.
Lastly, under 605.5, it says midpoint will require a BOCC approval. So, anything beyond midpoint.
It should say above.
Anything beyond or above midpoint. But the way this is listed out for the steps one through 15, it gives a step, a hiring criteria for hiring new employees at step eight, which is above the midpoint. So, then the question is, if you want to hire someone with eight-plus years' experience, as is outlined in the policy, do we have to come before the board to get to step eight? Because it is beyond the midpoint of the one to 15. So, that's, again, I only spent about 10 or 15 minutes reviewing this. The way I see it, it really favors external candidates versus internal promotions. That's just my overall review of that.
Thank you for your comment. Clarissa Costa.
Clarissa Costa, Bonner County treasurer, for the record. I agree with Jake, just maybe having, have had the chance just to review some of these changes. Not that they're bad changes, just to be able to maybe review them, see some input. We're the, I mean, we are the ones dealing with the employees, our employees and stuff. The one part, though, about, if I understand it correctly, if somebody is demoted, like, if I demote somebody in my office, maybe because they're not performing that job to my expectations, that they would continue to keep the same rate of pay that they're currently making?
No, the aspect of the demotion, as far as the policy, has not changed.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that if I did demote somebody, that the pay also drops.
It was trying to just satisfy the changes as far as 5% to 15% for promotions for internal applicants, but put it into the new grade and step structure and try to satisfy everybody's needs.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that, yes, the pay would get reduced, because obviously, I would be moving somebody else up, and I don't want my budget increasing, because I'm trying to fairly compensate where they're at.
That aspect didn't change.
All right, thank you.
Jennifer Arndt, Bonner County resident and a retiree, a former public employee for my entire career. And I was just looking at the 600.1 bonus payment. I think using taxpayer money for bonuses, bonuses can be very subjective, and being public servants, there really shouldn't be a bonus section in there. In the past few years, that has come up several times, because it's so subjective, what's above and beyond. And I'm hoping our elected officials and the people who were chosen by our elected officials are the best of the best, and they're public servants, and this is our public taxpayer money. So, that just makes it a really slippery slope. You've got your overtime pay, you've got your step salaries, and everybody should be doing their best job, not because of merit bonus pay. And I think that would remove a lot of the issues that have come up in the past about disparity and what constitutes above and beyond. So, I would seriously look at the bonus payment. That's what overtime, that's what, you know, HR has other ways of dealing with that. But because one department decides that their employees need a bonus one year and others don't get to that, because they're busy doing our job, their jobs for the people of Bonner County, I think this really needs to be re-looked at.
So, Jennifer, I'll interpret what you and Kevin said as you want, that section, 600.1, looked at. What she put forward was specific sections that she made amendments to under the 600, and so, that wasn't something that was reviewed. So, we'll put it as a request that we review the 600.1 of this compensation.
And just to clarify, we do intend to go through all the policies. This one is just amended to keep business going, so that we can still hire individuals, because the old policy is now enjoyed.
Okay, all right.
Kevin Moore for the record, again, so are we going to talk next about the severance package and making policies for the severance packages?
No.
So, what we have, so what she agendized was to review 600, 605.5. She went through ones that she changed. And so, what I just said to Mrs. Arndt was that we will look at that aspect to agendize that, to have that discussion. That's not what she was discussing, because she didn't make any adjustments to those. But based on what your comments are, you guys want that reviewed, so we'll make that a discussion from the board. So, any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this, so we can have a workshop with the department heads and with the commissioners and with HR, so that we can discuss and work out the fine details, so we're not rushing into something that we have to change again.
So, can I? Oh, I'm sorry.
We're in the, is there a second to the motion?
There absolutely is.
Okay, and discussion by the board? For me, this should go before the staff involved, and this could have been something that we did discuss at yesterday's meeting, to get the input from directors and management of how it would impact. And so, I support that. I don't feel that this is ready to move forward as is. I see inconsistencies in the language, but a huge lack of input from the people that will be charged with executing some of this. And specifically, I want us doing job evaluations in a way that moves us forward. Once we hire people, we have, the human capital management is up to us to do, and I don't want it to be seen as negative to do evaluations and then penalize. So, I personally would move towards HR should have a sit-down with all staff and a workshop that includes community, but to extract more information on this language. I know it's, it's good to look at a mayor ban and what other counties are doing, but Bonner County is, is a different breed, and we want to give our, make sure we're considering what the directors and management and personnel have to say about this. So, any further discussion?
May I add, ask one question? So, with that being said, I have no problem tabling it. So, are you guys in support of waiting on doing any hiring until we get this solidified?
Oh.
No. I think you have to bring it to the board. I think that this, there was an opportunity to actually discuss this yesterday at our directors' meeting, when we had all hands in the room, and that opportunity wasn't taken by HR. And so, I can't, I can't say for me that you limit what a department can have in terms of resources, because we didn't take that opportunity that was scheduled to have this discussion. Roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Risk management.
Do you want to run bridge, or just talk left?
Oh, we can go back.
He's back.
We'll go back.
Thank you for the opportunity to clarify these numbers. Looking at the resolution, it looks like there is a $2 error in the numbers on the Turnbull funds. So, that should be $86,289.65 instead of the $291.65. The amount from the striping budget, the $48,331.41 is correct, and the total amount for the contract of $134,623.6 is correct. The motion on the memo with that total amount is correct. So, with the, just the correction of that $291 to $289 from Turnbull should make things right.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
I still have an issue.
Oh.
Sorry, I'm just putting it in real quick.
Okay.
So, if you're saying the $48,331.41 is correct.
Yep.
And Turnbull is $82,000.
No, $86,000. Correct.
Fast typing.
Yeah. Yeah, hard, sorry, hard to keep track of all those numbers verbally, when you can't see them in front of you, so.
Did it work out there? Let's see.
I think the numbers on the resolution were correct, right? So.
No.
$48,331.41?
The, that, that is correct.
And then $86,289.65.
Is not correct, because that doesn't add up to the $134,623.6.
And your number that you read is different than the $86,291, because they didn't have cents on it on the second line.
Yeah, the memo has two different numbers for Turnbull funds, both of which are wrong. And then the resolution has a wrong number for the Turnbull funds to be carried forward.
So, I come up with a total of $134,621.6.
That's with the resolution using the $291.
Or, yeah. That's using the $86,289.65, which you just corrected.
Okay.
And the $48,331.41.
I don't have a cell phone in front, so I'll just add it.
This is right. This amount is right. Those two numbers.
This number here? $86,289.
No.
$291.
I'm getting $48,333.41.
Your number is.
$41.
You've got.
$31.
She's using a different phone.
$48,265 plus $48.
She's using this number.
Somebody want to contribute a number?
See, $291.65, but on this one.
Yeah.
But this.
That's correct.
So, that's.
Just not what we have.
$48,231.
So, you're saying that the $2 changes on the $48.
No.
No, he's saying it's on the 77.
This should be.
Less, and this should be more.
No, this is correct. This is the total amount in our striping budget.
It should be less than your total. Then that should be $241.
The number in your resolution is wrong, the number in the, this part, this, the memo is wrong.
The memo is wrong in two different places, but.
But the resolution as you provided is correct.
That doesn't add up to the $134,623.
This absolutely adds up.
Pick a number.
$2134.623.6.
Write three answers, pick out one that I just did.
This is $48,331.
Too bad we don't have a whiteboard.
The resolution is right.
I promise.
Read that.
Thank you, Ms. Pecos.
Or read the handwritten, no.
Just all over the place.
No, he, it's the memo portion, but the resolution's still correct.
Okay.
So, we'll entertain a motion.
Okay, so, the motion stays the same?
The motion is correct.
So, I moved to approve resolution 24/7/7, authorizing the clerk to open the road and bridge fiscal year 2025 budget, carry forward fiscal 2024 funds totaling $134,623.6 to the Bonner County Road and Bridge B budget, as detailed in the resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second, as corrected.
All right, roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Blame Jason.
Yeah, well, apparently, I can't add numbers either, so.
All right, risk.
Christian Jocelyn, risk manager, for the record. And my proposed resolution has less math than the last one, so hopefully it's okay. As a human resources and risk management departments, our advisors to all elected officials and all department heads, and work closely with prosecutor's office with legal compliance and litigation matters, human resources and risk management can best serve this function by directly reporting to prosecuting attorney. So, basically, I'm asking the board to decide to just have the reporting go back to the previous version, where it goes to the prosecutor. And this has been reviewed by legal and HR.
Okay. Did you want to give a comment, since you're here? Are you here for this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, Lewis Marshall for the record. Historically, HR for, I've been here since 2002, working for Bonner County. Historically, for the long, probably the longest period at that time, it was under the clerk. We never even thought about it, to be honest with you. HR works for all the elected officials and then the department heads. I've always taken that theory. I think it's the right theory. There are aspects of what HR does that is unique to the certain elected officials. What you were just talking about, compensation, falls under the board. There's an Idaho Supreme Court case that talks about generalized personnel policy, falls under the board. Nothing would change that if you move it back under me. I think the benefit is that sometimes HR doesn't feel like they have autonomy in terms of investigations, especially, what do they do if one of the commissioners comes to them and starts asking questions? They don't feel comfortable sometimes answering those, for good reason, sometimes. I know Mr. Wilson has given advice to previous boards that a lot of times in some of these investigations, the board really doesn't want to know what they think they want to know, because you are going to be the final arbiters on what happens with, let's say, a certain employee or something, if they fall under your purview. And so, sometimes it's better for the board not to know those things, even when they think they want to know. So, I do think that there are some benefits. On the other hand, I know that HR became kind of a focal point for some of the problems that previous boards, the previous two boards, had with my office and with, with HR. I don't want that to happen again. Frankly, my, my goal for the, this board and the upcoming board is that we get back to working together. I have no other goals, other than that, that I feel are nearly important, because I think that a strong message from the public has been sent, that they want our elected officials to get along and to work together. So, that's my goal. So, if you go ahead and do this today, if you choose to, and things don't go right for some reason, we'll bring it up and change it back. I am, I am here to help you, and I know Mr. Wilson is here to help you and HR, no matter who they, who their ultimate supervisor is.
Thank you. All right, we'll open it up for public comment on the discussion of the request to move human resources and risk management from the supervisory of the board, which has nothing to do with the rights and powers of the Board of Commissioners under the prosecutor's office. Mr. Moore.
Kevin Moore for the record, Bonner County resident. And so, I think you said a minute ago, and you can correct me, you said litigation matters? Did you say that?
Correct.
Yeah. So, that's a pretty interesting statement. So, I've got a couple of things I want to throw out here. As our county attorney here just mentioned, or whatever, we've had several administrations, whatever, where litigation has been a. whatever, where litigation has been a monetary hardship for a citizenry. And we're going to get to the severance thing because we talking about making policy and so.
Not under this one.
Kevin, this topic is moving HR underneath the prosecutor from the commissioner, and I give you credit for finding a way to deviate, but I want to stay on this particular topic.
It's not deviation, it's about money, it's about litigation.
But the topic is moving the department from one side to another side. So I want to hear.
I got no place to be able to bring up severance and policy.
You do in public comment, just not on this agenda item. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick to that because I don't want to not have public comment on individual items.
I want to talk about the price of two, no, I don't do.
Look, can I do the shut the mic thing?
This is a no-brainer. It never should have been taken out from under the board in the first place, or I'm sorry, from under the prosecutor, and it needs to go back there for a myriad of reasons in addition to what prosecutor just made. But it's a huge conflict to have it under the Board of Commissioners. So I urge you to vote yes on this.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, Chairwoman, based on information before us, I make the motion to approve having human resources and risk management report to the prosecutor.
There's a motion, is there a second? Any discussion from the board? I will comment that I personally am in favor of this because it allows also those who work in human resources to kind of have a place that they can go to address their grievances because when it comes down to employee-related issues, it comes back to the board. And so if you look at Bonner County, we have a lot of litigation, and some of that has to do with employee-to-board or elected official-related issues. And this would allow us to start doing a better job of improving the overall employee relationship within Bonner County and to help mitigate some of those risks. So I'm in favor of such a, such a move. Any further discussion?
No, I'll bring it up when we vote.
Well, the vote is just the vote, this is the discussion part, so we would have to discuss now.
Okay, well, I, I'm, I don't feel like I have enough information right now to be able to vote to support this. I would like to make a well-informed vote when I vote on things. I just got here a week ago, and I don't have the full dynamics of what is going on. So at this time, I, I can't support it. You know, if I, next couple of months, if I can see more and learn more about what's going on here, then, you know, we may be able to bring this back up again. If it doesn't pass, it may pass, I don't know, but that's kind of where I'm at right now.
One of the, one of the biggest issues with it being under us is if an employee has an issue, they're reluctant to go to HR if they know HR works for us because the issue might be with us, one of us directly. And why would I go to HR? Because it's going to go right back to the person I have the issue with. And so with HR being over under the legal department, you're not going to have that issue.
With the commissioners, but what if it has to do with your department? Are they going to feel comfortable? See, it's kind of a double-edged sword, the way I'm looking at it right now.
Under their department, it's a, it's a lot more critical.
Well, I think the other thing is, is as the board.
It's usually a legal thing at that point.
We have to do our own employee evaluations because the directors report to the board. And how do you do your employee evaluation with a director if you're, if you don't have, that person might feel like, I felt like Asia was very hypercritical, they should have a voice. Or for example, if you are a director and you want to do a name clearing hearing, you're potentially coming to the board of people you might have an issue with. And, and that's the reason, I think it's in part also to give support to the people that are in HR so that they have an opportunity, but that we, in part as a board, have to kind of pull together some of the way in which we operate to ensure we're paying attention to the human capital of the county that whether you like it or not, the boards have cost the county money through employee litigation, and this is a way of addressing some of that. So with that, I'll call for a roll call vote. Yes?
No, for the reasons I just stated.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. We have Airport, Dave Shook.
Morning Commissioners, Dave Shook, Airports for the record. Thank you for your time this morning. I have two items for you. First is a notice to proceed with construction to J-7 contracting for construction of apron and taxylene improvements at Priest River Airport. This notice to proceed follows the contract approved by this board on September 17th, 2024, agreeing to the construction of an expanded airplane parking apron and taxylene at Priest River Airport. This construction is funded by an FAA AID grant accepted by the county earlier this year. I recommend signing this agreement.
Thank you. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move that the Bonner County issue this notice to proceed and that the chair sign administratively.
Second, that.
Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
All right, next up.
Thank you Commissioners. Second item for you is a pavement maintenance on the runway at Sandpoint Airport. The pavement on the runway at Sandpoint Airport needs crack sealing. Earlier this year, we conducted an informal bid process due to the anticipated budget available, and Sulkirk Seal Co returned the best value estimate not to exceed $20,000. Cost of these repairs was approved in fiscal year 2024 budget, I'm sorry, 2025 budget account, zero, zero, three, dash, seventy-five-hundred. I recommend conducting these repairs.
Thank you. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chairwoman, based on the information before us, I move Bonner County perform this runway maintenance in the amount not to exceed $18,000.
I'll second that.
Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, our next item is District Two Commissioner Discussion. On 10/22 at 2:00 PM in this room, it, there's a change, it's this actual room, downstairs is taken up by elections. We're going to have the ag land and conservation easement discussion, it's from two to four. We've got two people flying up from Boise. I encourage as many people to attend. Part of the discussion is how do we as Bonner County protect agricultural land and interest? And in part, one of those is, yes, we do five-acre farms, but their view on some of it is that we need to maintain larger tracts of land for agriculture. What? Two to four.
What, what day, today?
Let me start over. On, on October 22nd, 2004, I'm gonna look at the people with pens who don't see the website that says it. Or the, 2024.
Two to four, he said.
Look, come if you want to, I've said 2024. From the time of 2:00 PM Pacific Standard Time to 4:00 PM, we'll have the ag land discussion. And I encourage everybody to attend. It is already on the county website. I understand y'all don't like this, but scroll down, it says meeting, it's right there. The Zoom link is actually there already. And all of you who have my cell phone number will still text me and say, when was this meeting? So I don't know why you wanted to correct in the meeting, Dan. Anyhow, but it's, it's huge to have people come from down south to participate. I did reach out to Farm Bureau to ask them to take part, and Dan Elliott, the president of our local Farm Bureau chapter, is going to try to be a participant in this discussion so that we can start being more involved in what's going on ag land and help direct what we want from our view. Did anybody get to participate last night with Albany Dam? There you go. So it'll be a repeat, but I did my part because I told you I would stay in the know. If you want to be involved in the updates on Albany Falls, you can go to uppercolumbiawm@usace-army.mil. Or you guys can just keep messaging me to tell me what did they say, which is what's happening. A little bit of disappointment, I'm not going to lie, I was a little disappointed in that the conversation didn't decrease the timeline of the repair. It essentially said by 2027, we'll get the first gate, and then six months per gate after that. So it still gives us quite a long timeline. They did discuss, from their view, that there's no risk of flooding because of the damage. They will have a temporary gate for Gate Three in place in about a year, it looks like. And the idea is, because the current gate that's in that slot means that we don't have a spare gate to put in because we're using our spare. So they're getting a spare built. I'm still pushing for the discussion of decreasing the timeline because they confirmed yesterday that there is no issue with funding, the funding is all there. So the question then is, how do we expedite construction of these gates to resolve it? They are working on a long-term plan for safe spring fill evaluation in time to be able to get us to the right levels during our spring runoff and address that. But I, I still feel like our community question is, why is it going to take so long? And now that we can confirm that finances aren't an issue, that we should get some push onto getting it done faster versus six months at a time? Why are we building one gate at a time instead of just building it all? But that question is still getting pushed forward because I anticipate that, that most of you guys are going to ask that. We do have an update on Camp Bay, but I'm going to first make sure that we say thank you to our planning department because they have been arguing on behalf of the concerns that they hear the public asking. And I'm going to let the planning director give the update, and he's going to explain kind of the fight that he's been in to get the type of trail that he recognizes that the two of you and the rest of Bonner County want.
So first off, I forgot my don't shoot the messenger signs, so just figuratively. Yes, I've been back and forth with the M3 company and some of their representatives on the easement language. It's been between me and Bill and their attorney and their management staff. So we've, I think we have a solidified version of the easement that best protects the decision that was made by the board back in whatever the last hearing date was, I think it was '22. Yeah. So I'll be presenting that next Tuesday. The timeline right now, they have a couple of things they need to finalize, some signage on the trail to make sure people know what direction the trail goes. And then they want to hydro-seed some of the areas to ensure that there's no stormwater runoff and the trail stays intact. And I think they're, they're pending those two things, they anticipate opening the trail beginning of November, so about a month.
And just to give credit, since he's not giving credit to himself, he has been pushing that we should have the trail open, we shouldn't have to wait for signage and hydroseeding that people will know. And so it's not, you, we are in a back and forth, but I, we do have to recognize that the director has been arguing for access to that road. Okay? All right? Not at, I'm not at that spot yet because this is my report. I end with saying questions from the public on items, and I know you're going to have one. So we're gonna, we're gonna go to the next one. So there is no. So in terms of litigation, I don't have updated information on the question about the severance payment that was made. When we get that answer from the AG, I'll make sure to let everybody know that. We have received additional tort litigation from, in the county, I think it was today. As far as workshops pending, on the ninth, we have the Public Facilities Workshop at 9:00 AM. That's to discuss this building and the building across. If people want to attend, you can attend that. The planning department, again, is having, we have to give kudos to the department for taking the initiative to reach out to Panhandle Health to have a discussion of what the building location permits and their desire for enforcement look like with Bonner County, because they've recognized the constant push from Panhandle Health to say, since you pulled a building location permit, that they're using it as an opportunity to do code enforcement on their end. So he did meet with Panhandle Health. We have an understanding of what they're wanting, but we are going to have a workshop here on the 10th at 10:00 AM with Panhandle Health. And in part, part of that discussion has to be, what does Bonner County's relationship in terms of planning and development look like? In some areas, they require test holes, for example, for subjects in order to give that answer. We've heard Catherine with Panhandle Health tell us that without doing test holes, they can't really answer. And so that's a good opportunity to be part of the conversation. A lot of people have sent me messages over not having a building location permit signed off by Panhandle Health because Panhandle says another building on the property is not in compliance. And is that what we're supposed to do when we pull a specific permit, or is that up to Panhandle Health? So if you guys have an interest in that discussion, I encourage you to be part of that discussion and recognize that we're trying to shift into recognizing what the community is saying. One of the other things that the director did change on doing the planning report out is adding in a section that said public comment. So if you guys want to give input on planning and kind of that direction, there's a public comment section now during that meeting in front of the board where you guys can give your issues, concerns, and questions, and have a dialogue with the director in that open meeting. Part of what we heard and we answered in that was, people want to be involved, they don't just want to be told what's happening. And so he did open that, that up, and you can always look at the historical meanings. So with that, are there any questions from the public on what I reported? I gotta go to Fred first because he was ready to go.
And yes, I am a member, a resident of Bonner County.
Yes.
One of the things we seem to have forgotten about the trail is, is the trail really was never the issue, it was access to the lake. And I'd like to know, we've been down via the water and looked at the area that is supposedly set aside, but we don't know where they're ultimately going to put the access to the lake. And I haven't heard any discussion about toilet facilities or any of the common sense things that need to go in. I understand the trail's exciting, but it's not the primary issue. Primary issue is, is access to the lake. So I'd kind of like to hear a little bit more about that if we can.
So I think the trail and their signage is taking you to the access to the lake, and I, I don't believe that they were required to put in facilities for that trail. Kevin.
Well, it was poorly negotiated from the very beginning. And I'm sure that everybody in here has to go to the bathroom.
Can you come here? Because if you, if we're going to continue, we got to make sure everyone can hear you.
We all have to go to the bathroom. And there, that, that trail's going to be about three-quarters of a mile. There's no facilities whatsoever, and a porta potty would work just fine, but there are no facilities down there whatsoever. And I know that everybody in this room can relate to going to the bathroom.
Closer by the moment.
And I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how they're going to deal with that because if people go to the lake and go to the bathroom, you've got a problem. If I expose myself, I've committed a felony. So.
So I think that the part is, we're not, I, I, there is no way that we are going to get everything that is desired over giving away a piece of road that a lot of people in the community did not want given away. With the negotiation that took place in court, there was no requirement that they install facilities. There are trails within Bonner County where there are not facilities.
Ninety-nine percent of the trails have no facilities.
In terms of what I reported out, and, and what I opened up for questions for is, in terms of what I reported out is the completion of the trail and access. If you want me to add in a question about where that access is, that's part of what they're working on, is the signage to that. But I, I'm confident that we are not going to be able as a county to require them to put in bathrooms on that trail. And it's not, it's not going to, it's not going to make anybody feel better because people didn't want the road, there were people that did not want that road to be vacated by the county. But once that decision was made, what, what I'm reporting out is the status of the trail and access, with a clear understanding that there is no update that I'm ever going to give that will make anybody feel better that that road was vacated.
Well, the problem.
But, but, but I'm asking you if you have a question for me about my report, not to talk about the fact that the road was vacated, because I can't fix that, I'm reporting out.
Actually, you can, and that's part of my question. And that is, is it was a poorly done resolution by the previous county commissioners. And the actual resolution of that needs to be a reassessment of, of the resolution. The resolution was not done, the resolution was a slap in the face.
But I didn't talk about, I know, but I didn't talk about the resolution. I talked about the trail and the status of opening. So do you have a question for me about that? If you want to talk about the resolution, use public comment for that discussion, but I don't want, I'm trying to stick what's on the agenda.
I'll be back.
I know you will. Specific to what I reported out on District Report. Specific to what I reported out on District Report.
Yeah, this has to do with your commissioner discussion under the number three there about litigation. And you brought up a dialogue, you said "tort litigation." So can you go any more deeper for the public to know why you brought up the word "tort litigation"?
So what I said was, we received another tort litigation regarding Hidden Meadows, I believe it was.
You didn't say that part.
Hidden Meadows?
Hidden Meadows. And so it's not an, it's a notice of tort. Mountain homes, sorry. I said it wrong, mountain homes.
So is there any more information than you can give us than that?
That's it. That's just notice of tort. So I, one of the things people asked me was to give updates on notices that we received so that you have an understanding of what's coming towards the county.
Can you just repeat the Panhandle meeting, November 10th at 10:00 a.m.? Is that right?
You people. No, it's actually this Thursday. Panhandle Health is Thursday, this Thursday, the 10th at 10:00 a.m. in this room. Anybody else? The calendar on Bonner County, if you slide down, it actually, I looked to make sure before I came out, it's all updated with the meetings that I mentioned. Anything else? All right. District Three Commissioner Report.
First one.
My first one, yeah. Okay, so there's a few things that I would like to bring up. I did the county, the quarterly jail inspection last week. I volunteered to do that. Never been in there before. It was quite an impressive little tour. It was great to see how well-run and organized our jail is. I've never got to witness one from the inside. Luckily, I'm blessed with that. I would like to give a big kudos to Lieutenant Newsome. He's the one that runs the jail there. It was very well, there was respect going both ways, which I think, you know, the inmates, even though they may have screwed up in the past, they were still human beings and they need to be treated with respect. But that's definitely a two-way street when you get into jail. So there was, I got to witness that, and it was really a great thing to actually see. I would like to thank our Bonner County Emergency Management for sponsoring our community's Panhandle Preparedness Expo last weekend. It was very well-attended. I think it's a great thing for the public to be able to get out there and see the different businesses and the different demonstrations and all out there related to preparing. It's in the air that something's coming down. We don't know what, but I just want to give a kudos to our Bonner County Emergency Management for sponsoring that. There was no cost to the county. It's all volunteer time, and all the money that it costs to put that on is paid for by the vendors and all that show up. Last, I attended last night's ideal Trussell Creek hearing. It was a public hearing regarding the proposed marina at the Trussell Creek, so I'm trying to wrap my head around that project. So it was fairly well-attended, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. Public comment. Kevin Moore, you're up.
I think Dan's up first.
Dan Rose?
You're on the list.
Oh, you're not even on the list.
I'm going to go first.
It's past nine o'clock.
Dan Rose, for the record. I'm not sure, initially, in the years past, we always had public comment at the front end of the agenda. I don't know if that's going to change. I'm not sure if that was part of the request last week that did not pass through. And secondly, I'll offer, at times, criticism as well as praise to different departments. I think Mr. Gabel deserves some praise on his activities with the, with the trail issue. And I would suggest that the HR falling under the prosecutor has been an issue long at attention, and there should be no reason why we don't know about it right now. And, and so I do appreciate the two-to-one vote, the two-vote part of the two-to-one vote. Thank you.
Mrs. Kramer is up next.
Jennifer Kramer, resident of Segal. A couple of things. One, I've noticed that there are some people that speak who don't say where they live, and I guess I would like to ask that you ask them where they live when they speak. And then, secondly, last week, Ron, there was a couple of agenda or motions that Asia made that neither one of you seconded for discussion. And that was one of your campaign promises, if you will, to second them and at least have a discussion. And so I would like to ask that you keep, today was, that didn't happen, but that you keep that in mind going forward because there's, in my opinion, there's no reason not to second something for discussion. You can vote it down when the vote comes. So, thank you.
And I agree with you. I would just ask the public, that was literally my second day in office, probably the largest agenda that this board has seen for many years. So I apologize in going forward. You can expect different on that.
Anyone else in the room?
Kevin Moore, for the record. A Bonner County resident and to fulfill Sister's request or whatever, yeah, corner of Black Tail and Highway 95.
Where is that?
Carywood.
Sure, thanks.
Area. So I've got several things. Since we lost our authoritarian dictatorial commissioner, and we have a new guy in, I would ask that there be a looking into or a re-purposing of a parking spot out here because it seemed like he wanted to use his authority or whatever to harshly come at me or whatever, and then making it more a policy, whatever, to where this parking spot was done away with. From what I understand, we don't have enough parking spots typically anyhow, and now with the new building over here. And so I want the commissioners to relook at that with the accompanying of people that are involved in that, to open that parking spot back up because it was a parking spot for many years until a certain person determined, it's like, hey, I don't like you.
What parking spot?
You can find out. You can dialogue with the people.
In the front, you come in, there's a jog, and then there's the parking areas. Historically, it's never been a parking spot because that is the backup access to exit from the parking spot in the, safely.
Okay.
In the front. I can show it to you.
Yeah.
So in real time, your statement is, it wasn't a parking spot, and it's a safety issue, and so it was just officially made known that it wasn't a parking spot?
Because it was brought to my attention. I did not pay attention to anybody parking there on Tuesday.
Were you a Lincoln park?
Well, that was a contesting. There was some red paint farther back on the curb, whatever.
Is this a confession?
And so, Mr. Moore, maybe we can-
And so there was no lines there saying no parking. So it seemed like it was a common sense to where this is a parking spot along with the others.
Mr. Moore, I think that-
I'm just asking the commissioners to look at that because I don't think it would-
I'll walk and look at it.
And so, yeah, now I'm going to go to Christian here, whatever, as we've had our hardships in the past or whatever about litigation in Bonner County, whatever, as I've-
You'll address the board, not the employees.
Thank you.
And so I'm asking that you guys, whatever, work with Mr. Jocelyn here. And this has to do with the severance. And so I would like, as a citizen, to know, for somebody to look back, and I'm guessing that's his department, but you guys can decide that, how many other severances have happened in, say, the last 10 years?
A lot.
Thank you, and for mentioning that because now we're on record, there's a lot. And so hopefully, somebody can come up with a record of them and how much they were, and not that we need to know to who.
Have more nondisclosure.
So maybe we don't need to know who, but we should know the monetary that. So that's one of the main things I wanted to get out, and it looks like I'm in arrears unless we-
You are out of time, but I will say that right now, I'm going through department audits line by line, and right now I am on Human Resources. And the public is entitled to know not necessarily the person or the event, depending on what it is, but I'll make sure that that's something that I'm looking at when I'm going through the audits. Okay?
I didn't get one.
Dave Bowman. And for Mrs. Kramer, I'll say I live in the Sally Valley. I don't know why that should be a requirement.
No, 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 Bonner County.
Well, I do live in Bonner County. So several things. I want to reiterate what she said. I appreciate your apology, but you were adamant that it was just wrong for a commissioner, for no one to second a motion, and then you turn around and did exactly that. So you've apologized for it, and that's okay. I just, that was going to be part of my comment. What Dan Rose said also about public comment, it was in the beginning for a long time. It got moved to the end so that our prior board chair could shut it down and not put the meeting at risk for being closed. That was his motivation to put it at the end. Turns out, it's worked out okay at the end because it's a chance to get up and comment on something that you weren't expecting to comment before. It also worked really well when it was in the beginning. So I would ask that we have, we don't want to have the whole meeting turn into ad nauseam public comment, but it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a certain amount of it at the beginning and a certain amount at the end because they both serve a purpose. You know, one is to ask for things to get put on the agenda or things that you'd like to bring up or that happened at the last meeting. So, and then the last one is, I'd like to bring up that there is an opening currently on the zoning commission. It would be nice if those would get announced here also because if you're not reading the notices in the back of the B or you're not combing through the horribly done new county website to find this stuff, you're not going to know. I happen to know because I happen to know. But I would encourage public, anybody who's interested in planning and zoning or land use, issues, to apply for that job. And I think applications are open until the 22nd, maybe?
And end, and it's not end of business day because there was no time put on there. And after we had our discussion, we agreed it will stay open until the next business day and that the next time he notices one will have a time, closing time that says close of business day.
So what is the date?
I believe it is 10/22, but it'll essentially be 23 because there was no time noticed.
And the next zoning commission meeting is on the 17th, so you could even observe one of those meetings and then see, wow, we could use another member on there.
So before you move, so since we've gone back to allowing comments on each individual item, in terms of public comment, because I don't think it would work to put it at the beginning and at the end, to have two sections of public comment, because we struggle a little bit with staying on the topic that we have when people want to give their between public comments.
Well, we don't all struggle with that.
We, as a business meeting, we're not, we're not talking individuals, but as a business meeting, as we grow into what is the best way, the value on the end, regardless of how it ended up at the end, I can see the value at the end is, after people have heard a lot of people talking, they might have a comment after they've sat through the meeting.
Yeah.
At the beginning, you may not have that. And then what will happen is, if people try to use opportunities when you get to the end of the agenda to say, well, I want to change the topic essentially. And so I can see if we were not having public comment on each item, moving it back to the first. But if we are going to say, we're going to commit as a community to staying on the agendized item when we give a public comment, and then using the free form at the end, that that would make the agenda flow more organized because you have the opportunity to discuss in advance of general public comment. Because we have to do it one or the other.
I'll buy that. I get, I'm so locked into the prior regime not allowing public comment on agendized items, I think that influenced my thinking so.
Okay. All right. I'm seeing people nod, saying that my explanation works for why we keep it at the end. And then I'm also agreeing that everyone in this room agreed that they're going to stay on the agendized topic when I say "public comment" on the item. Okay. Any other public comment?
I'm back. Jennifer Arnn, Bonner County, Segal resident. I just want to focus back on Camp Bay, as you know I would. The thing is access. The judge said that she would agree to the decision that she made, however flawed, because it guaranteed public access to the lake. We've now been without any access to the lake there after over 114 years of public access, guaranteed public access. We haven't had any for almost two years. And saying that signage or hydro seeding, I can come up with a temporary sign in five minutes and stick it up. And when there was a barbecue held by, actually not even sponsored by the Arns, in February of 2021, they were very careful to rope off temporarily 50 feet to make sure that people stayed within the public area. And that was done in an instant. So saying that it needs to be hydro seeded and signage and what's next? We're going to, we have to wait for the docks to be completed, the construction vehicles to be out of the way? Public access is public access, and that's what the judge said needed to happen. And it needs to happen today. And I thank Jake very much for working on our behalf. But again, you know, he's, this is the county, and we should not be told by the developers what they're willing to, what piecemeal they're going to give us when the judge decided that this is what needed to happen.
Jennifer, thank you for your comments, and I think that, and I do appreciate you thanking Director Gabel because he has gone back and forth on exactly what you're saying. And it doesn't, it doesn't make it an easy situation when you're at the limitation of, it's not our property and a different decision.
I know what it's like to have the rep of M3 directed at you over, and this is a county. They can, they can throw whatever they want, but-
And I will tell you, he has been working diligently about, because he just told you November, but last week, when I checked in with him, they wanted to push it out to January.
Of course, of course.
But my point is, he's actively fighting for what you are asking for with the, with the same meaning of the minds and understanding of a situation that is not desirable by a lot of people. But he, he's pushed it forward, and he continues to have that argument with Bill on access to the road. Because when it came up with, he came up with January, he got it pushed forward, and he's still continuing to argue, using partly what your frustrations are, okay?
But at least hearing this and so that the people can hear that this is what's happening, I think is a big start.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to go to Dimitri. You're just going to reiterate what she said.
No, I have some suggestions if I don't.
Dimitri. And I do agree, you don't have to say your address, but there's, the reason people do the Bonner County is people want to know who's influencing politics, and I think that's the reason that a lot of places do that. So can you just state your name and Bonner County resident? You don't have to say where, in Bonner County. Going once, going twice?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Dimitri Borisov, resident of Bonner County. First, I would like to say thank you for making some positive changes at the meetings. But my main question is, on October 17th, the EMSAC, which is the EMS Advisory Board of the Commissioners, basically on the 17th, all terms are expiring on October 17th, but I have not seen any advertisement or any applications posted anywhere for people to apply or to be on that board.
So as soon as Chief Lindsay does work through that, we'll get it posted, and I'll make sure that you get a specific email noting that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It hasn't been posted yet, though. Mr. Fred.
Fred Arnn, Bonner County. I'm back temporarily. I'll be back after this, too. Might I suggest that since this was such a hot issue and there were so many people involved in opposing this, that they might solicit some input from the community as to what the community would like to see? Like I said, I really think having toilet facilities down there is going to be rather important. I, I have some question, like Jennifer said, about signage and all the reasons why things can't happen. Once again, that judge guaranteed us access to the lake, not to the trail, to the lake. The trail is simply a conduit to the lake. I really would like to see more done on what's going to happen at the lake and to see if we can't get facilities that are a little more human. The closest public bathroom to that is probably six miles away, seven miles away. So if you want to take a nice stroll down to the lake and you drive, get out of your car, go down three quarters of a mile, spend an hour on the beach, come back up, most of us old people probably explode before that happens, so.
I cannot give a comment on that. I can only tell you that access to the lake is what they were required to do. They were not required to do facilities.
I think we're past telling them to make an amendment.
Yes.
Well, well- Well, well, actually, actually, you know, part of the problem was, is that the Commissioners passed a very poor resolution. And the actual way of mitigating this, in my opinion, is is to take a look at that resolution and perhaps redo it. But I'm not an attorney. I just have opinions, that's all. So anyway, that's, that's what I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Is that okay? Yeah, and then we'll go Brandon Kramer next.
Do you want to do Brandon first?
His hand was up before you stood up.
Brandon, go.
Yeah, go ahead, Brandon. And I heard people say they don't like that Zoom always has to wait to the end, because they might have to log off, too. So I'm trying to be fair on who's identified. Mr. Kramer?
Good morning, Brandon Kramer. I'm a Bonner County resident. My comment is, or request is rather, to Commissioner Corn to place agenda items for the next meeting, to remove the standing rules, to actually rectify the mistake that you had made in the previous meeting.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, Mrs. Gunter. And then Diane will be next.
Monica Gunner, Bonner County, Sagel resident. I just want to say what a breath of fresh air this meeting has been. I mean, it's the first one I've been back since somebody's been gone, and my heart feels really good. So, but the other thing, on the potty for the trail, is there any way we could, Bonner, that we could put, I mean, I don't use a trail, but I'm just thinking, why couldn't we put one on the end of the road where people will be parking to use the trail? Can, can Bonner County put a bathroom there?
There you go.
Just a thought, because it seems like, it seems like a simple way to fix a problem.
You didn't hear what he said. I think the clerk is advertising for a trail hit in the back row.
But if we put one on your trail, we gotta put one on everybody's trail.
Oh, I don't use that trail anyway. I'm just thinking.
So the current answer is, we cannot change what they were required to do, but we will accept the request as a bathroom, should that be a spot that has a porta potty on it, and we can look at that from a Parks and Waterways as a county issue. I understand you want us to look at stuff deeper, but that addresses your porta potty versus other issues. Diane, or Dan, whoever's behind that name.
It's Diane. I just wanted to thank Ron for his apology. It was a breath of fresh air. As Monica stated, this meeting has been a pleasure to watch, and humility on this board is a pleasure to see. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments? All right. With that, we will adjourn the